It's my honor to get this town hall meeting going for the mayor. And I'm gonna try to do the best I can to introduce our great mayor of this great city, Douglasville, and myself and Travis, we're gonna double team this introduction. So I'm gonna take a little bit, he's gonna take a little bit. So the mayor has been the mayor for a few years, and she was on the city council some years back when I was a captain with the police department. And you know, we had some conversation back then, she was very supportive of the police department, which she's supportive of the police department at this time. And now she's supportive of all the different departments within city government. And we really appreciate her. And now Travis, you can come on up and say something since I called you up here too. But this is how we do it in Douglasville. It's a team effort. I appreciate it, and you know, I'm glad to be here. And I hope the viewing audience get something out of this meeting because we're always trying to put forth to the community exactly what we're doing to keep you safe and keep you engaged into the city government.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Travis Landrum, director with the Parks and Recreation Department. Kinda hard to follow up Chief Sparks, but I'll try my best. We want to just continue to open up these town hall meetings to have the public to come out and hear the initiative going from the city as well as get input from the community themselves. So that's the great purpose behind these town hall meetings. I personally want to welcome everyone to the Alice J Hawthorne Recreation Center. This is where we'll have the first of two, hopefully I'm not stealing any thunder, but the first of two town hall meetings. So please make yourself welcome at home. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our great Mayor Rochelle Robinson.
Twin Towers over there. My chief and my Parks Director, thank you so much. Chief Sparks, one with the community. He is an awesome, awesome leader. And Travis, my first appointee being mayor, and it was a great appointment. He is an excellent Parks and Recreation Director. I'd like to welcome you all to the town hall meeting. And as Mr. Landrum has said, there are gonna be two this week, and we'll continue to have town hall meetings periodically. I know that earlier this year, we had a joint meeting with the city council members, the school board, the county commission, and so we will do that again in the spring. At this time, I'd like to recognize the elected officials in the House. My councilwoman, Dr. LaShawn Burdenley, please stand and please, if you would have some words, we'd like to... You don't need the microphone. Thank you so much. And councilmember Richard Siegel, who represents the tributary area, please wave your hand, Mr. Siegel. Thank you. Our Judge, Judge Caldwell. I know she's so humble, she doesn't like to be recognized, but we always want to recognize our leader. Handling and judicial system. So what we'll do tonight is I'll talk to you just briefly, some opening comments, and then we will have presentations by various departments. We would ask that you save your questions until the end. We'll have topics of discussion from transportation, and that is a hot topic here in New Horizons on the north side because we have that $111 million project that's coming through. And so the highway is an excellent project, and we'll talk about that. We talk about finances. You always want to hear about your money, your tax dollars. We are very diligent and conscientious in how we take care of the taxpayer dollars, and we're transparent, and we would like to make sure that you understand everything that's happening with your tax dollars. We'll talk about downtown and special events, and that's really exciting. That's part of the community where you can get involved and come downtown to various things that we have: ice cream socials, Wednesday wind down, food truck Mondays, all kinds of great, great programs that we offer for the community, for the entire community. We'll talk about community involvement opportunities. We have a volunteer team as well as some folks that have very small compensation for their time. And we've had a volunteer fair that we held last year, and it was really, really well attended. We have lots of people that are getting engaged, and we're excited about that. Public safety! Always want to hear how we're gonna keep each other safe. That's one of the primary things that people, premium things that people move to a community for is safety in schools. And so we'll have a report from the police department, the chief and his wonderful staff. And then beautification efforts. You know, cleanliness is next to godliness, and if you have pride, it doesn't matter if you're in a cottage or a mansion, you want your community to be clean and your homes to be clean. And so we're gonna talk to you about beautification efforts. And all of this will encompass what your SPOLOST dollars are doing. SPOLOST is that acronym that's short for Special Purpose Local Option Sales Task, all these acronyms. But we voted on that in November, last November, and you all passed the SPOLOST so that we can take a penny of the sales tax and put that towards the city and the county. I'll just talk to you a little bit about some of the things that I've been doing as mayor. We've had a jobs fair. When I first was elected, people talked to me about jobs, and so we had a great jobs fair at the conference center, was really well attended. I'm not certain how many vendors we had, Ms. Chelsea, but it was lots of vendors. Transportation, people from the federal state and local and private vendors were there. And we'll have that again in February of 2018. Is it right, is it February, Ms. Chelsea? But okay, yes, February of 2018. I instituted a Christmas family. And so of course, we have the Christmas parade every year, and last year was my first Christmas family. It was the Soules, Tracy and Austin Soule, they live in Chapel Hills. They have kids from kindergarten all the way through high school, and their son started college. So they have seven kids, eight kids, my husband's telling me, they have eight kids. And so they were my first Christmas family because if you go to their home, it's like Christmas every day. They're running all around. And so I wanted to crown a family every year to represent Christmas in the city and just honor them. And with that, they had a special sleigh that Mr. Gregg and Maintenance and Sanitation helped build, and it was so much fun. Santa Claus was there, we had fake snowflakes and reindeer. And so this year, the Christmas family will be the Miracle League. And so we'll have the Miracle League. We're gonna fit them all on that sleigh, Mr. Gregg. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but that's gonna work. So instituted that. Donation bins, I don't know if you've been to like Walmart or different places, and you may see donation bins. And so it's a great thing. We need them to help out the community, some for clothes, some for books, some for children. But it was kinda getting out of hand where you could go to a store or a business and there would be three or four bins up. So we passed a ordinance to have just one bin per facility. And so that's kinda helping clean up. Every year for the past 12 years, we've had cleanup and amnesty for yard sales. And so this year with cleanup, now cleanup, Mr. Gregg can talk about that for Maintenance and Sanitation, but you can put anything out to the curb you want to if you live in the city limits during your regular pickup day. So that's mattresses and all kinds of stuff. But this year, we're gonna start doing cleanup and litter pickup with Keep Douglasville Beautiful. So I'll be out with the vest on, picking litter up in the city. I started with the Omegas, the local chapter here, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. They have Chapel, not Chapel Hill Road, Fairburn Road, and they pick up once a month. And they have a sign, as soon as you come off of I-20 in Fairburn, it's a big sign up there that says Tri-Mu Fraternity Omega Psi Phi Pickup. So they have adopted that street, and they go once a month on a Saturday and pick up trash and litter. And so I've helped them. The Kappa's, Kappa Alpha Psi has Highway 5. And my sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha, we've adopted Highway 92. We're trying to get the paperwork completed so that we'll pick up trash and litter on Highway 92 once a month. So those are some of the things that I've implemented. We're still working on some other things. We're looking at a mayor's ball, and that ball will sponsor a nonprofit every year. The first nonprofit will be the Boys and Girls Club, which is right in the city limits at Hunter Park. I've been to 22 schools. Last year, I go and talk to young people. I have three children, pray my strength, teenagers 14, 16, and 18. And so our son, my husband's here, Pastor Jeff Robinson, our son Joel graduated from Douglas County High last year, and he is at Georgia Southern. So all of you mothers, you know, pray for me with my baby, my first born, only boy, off to college. Hey, Mr. Citizen, back there. Gave my boy a job during the summer, thank you so much. He worked in there. I think he has the legal bug now. He's been bitten by the legal bug, working with Mr. Citizen. But he's off to college, and so we just do, I try to go into the school systems and encourage students and tell them to really follow their dreams and to stay diligent about school. And so with that, we have some literature on the tables, and I'll go over those things briefly so that you know what you're picking up. I asked, thank you so much from my city staff and communications, Ms. Kelly Hunter and the staff day. She is such a blessing, you know, she's, we're happy to have her back. She had a procedure, and she was gone for six weeks. She came back to work and hit the ground running, and I had like a whole list of things for her to do, and she accomplished it in very quick and fast time. But we have the douglasville.gay.gov, and there's a list back there, and it gives you all the important numbers in city business. And it's inclusive of the county, so animal control, licenses, the district attorney's office, fire, juvenile program, just everything you need within the city and county governments and those resources. And on the back, it's a city ward map that shows you your council members and where they're located. So that's one thing. Then we have my address, State of the City address for 2017. I do an address every year that is televised, and we have that information here, which is a brief synopsis of everything. And then the annual report for 2017. And so if you would like to pick some of those things up, this literature can help you navigate your way through government. And really, this town hall meeting is bringing city's government to you. I know a lot of you cannot make those city council meetings, or you can't come to when we have other events, so I'd love to come and talk with you. And again, we're going to have the different departments present, and after we will answer any questions, we want you to hold your questions because I am quite sure really that we'll answer all of your questions before we finish the presentations. But I'd love to hear anything else that we may not have covered that you can ask at that time. The police department has several flyers back there as well. Neighborhood watch, so that we can be each other's, our brother's keeper in our neighborhoods. The Douglasville Police Fall Festival is gonna be held at the police department, and that is October the 14th, and it's gonna be lots of fun. The chief does a public handgun clinic. He has clinics about everything, staying safe, recognizing people that's trying to shoot up places, I don't even know what you call it, all kinds of stuff. Chief has, and his staff has quarterly events at the public safety office. And then these are important numbers in the Douglasville Police Department that you can call. Code enforcement, all of those types of things. And this is an annual report that tells you what the police department has been doing. So we will move on in the program, and our first presentation is transportation. Am I correct? Who's doing transportation? You, Devin? Come on, Devin Hooper! This is the young, I don't want to say the baby of the bunch. He's been such a blessing. Thank you, Devin. We're looking excited. We're excited to hear what you're gonna have to say about transportation. Please hold your questions, put a little pin in or to write it down, and ask Devin, and he and I will answer any questions that you have after for transportation. Well, welcome from our department, Development and Community Department, Devin Hooper. Please welcome him as he comes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like I said, my name's Devin Hooper. I'm a planner for the Planning and Zoning Department in the Community Development Department for the city of Douglasville. Today, I'm gonna be talking about transportation projects that the city has going on in the Planning and Zoning Department. Here you can see just a synopsis of what I'm gonna be speaking about today. One of the transportation projects, the first one to talk about is the big one, of course, which the mayor mentioned, State Route 92 relocation project, the new plaza project going on in downtown Douglasville, Welcome Center, the redesign that we're having at the Welcome Center, lighting and banners phase two that's happening here on Dallas Highway, and the Riverside Bridge rehabilitation. So diving into the big one, which I'm sure most of you know about, right here by Jesse Davis Park, a lot of it goes on here too. And that's the State Route 92 project that has been going on for several years now. It's a three-mile span that goes through the city of Douglasville. As the mayor mentioned, it's a $111 million project. Right now, the estimated completion date is December of 2019. They have recently been doing a lot of roadwork and paving on this side by Jesse Davis and everything, and they have got the subwork done for the railroad, which some people might have saw whenever they moved the road over to tunnel underneath the railroad. So the 92 will now go underneath the railroad tracks to make it a little bit easier to get across there without having to wait on a train, which I had to do on the way over here today. Some of the places that are still in progress are the CVS over on Fairburn Road, right at the Hospital Drive area, they're still paving it. They've got the curb and gutter set up there, but they're still waiting to actually pave it along there. And one thing that's gonna be good about this project is that they're installing lighting and signal poles along the entire route. So it'll be signal advancements, and it'll be well lit along there, as well as they're installing sidewalks in areas for walkability. So the next project that we've been working on is the O'Neal Plaza. If you've been downtown, you've seen the construction that's been done there. It's been in progress for a little bit, and they've actually moved along fairly well on it. It is an $11 million project. It does include the Welcome Center, which I'll talk about next. It was to help with a lot of drainage problems that they were having on the plaza. Water would build up in specific areas, so hopefully with the new design, it helps to use the grades to our advantage and drain well. The new fountain, which was recently painted, so we have a newly painted fountain that'll hopefully bring a lot of life and beautification to the downtown area. Hopefully more tent space, or there will be more tent space within the plaza, whereas the old plaza, it was nicely laid out, but there wasn't a lot of places to set up a tent. This will have a lot of tent spaces, which will hopefully come to our advantage, especially after the ribbon cutting, when the chili cook-off will be going on. Landscaping, everything will be going in to help with the beautification of the area and give it a nice green feel, and it'll help with walkability along there. With that project, we have the Welcome Center project, trying to keep the historical integrity. That's the Welcome Center right there on Broad Street. It used to be the old bank that's at the corner of the plaza on Broad Street. They're redoing the inside of it to make it a little bit more friendly, a little bit more accessible. They're gonna have public restrooms in there that are ADA compliant. The Welcome Center staff will have a kitchen in there that they can prepare meals and stuff in, so it helps them out a little bit. I know it's something they've been looking forward to, and new furniture, new paint job. So hopefully it makes our Welcome Center, brings our Welcome Center up to date a little bit while keeping the historical integrity on the outside. They're also gonna be replacing the roof to fix a lot of the problems that they had because it is an old building. But hopefully keeping that nice outside appeal. Lighting and banners phase two is happening up here on Dallas Highway, along the west side of it, in the area that isn't gonna be, gonna stay part of 92. It's on what's gonna be dedicated back to the city on this, right as you go across the railroad tracks. It's new sidewalks and new lighting and banners along that side of the road to try and help with making it a little bit safer and a little bit more lit up at night, and banners for advertisements and stuff like you see in downtown, where they have Christmas banners and stuff like that. So that's in the process right now. I know they're working on getting construction and stuff set up soon. They haven't actually started a lot on the actual paving or anything yet, but it is in progress, and it's happening right around the corner here. And the last thing is the Riverside Bridge redevelopment, rehabilitation project, which is over in the tributary area on Riverside Parkway. That's a bridge that, that road has traveled a lot by multiple cars and trucks and everything. So trying to make sure that it has its integrity. There was a study done on it that said that, you know, it could be in better shape to help, to help improve the use that it gets on it. So we're rehabilitating that bridge to make it a little bit sturdier, to ensure that, trying to be a little proactive in making sure that there's no damages or anything that happens on that bridge and make it, bring it up into compliance for the use that it is. And that is everything I have. If you have any questions, Michelle Wright, she's our planning director, she actually does all the transportation projects. I assist her with them, but she's the lead on most of them. She has all the connections with GDOT. That's her email address on the bottom of the screen there. Feel free to email her if you have any specific questions about the project. And our contact information is also listed on the pamphlet that Madam Mayor showed earlier with all the contact informations, the Planning and Zoning Department.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Devin. And Devin, you have to go to the hot seat when you're finished because all the panelists are, the presenters are gonna be on the panel to answer questions. I didn't give you that instructions in the beginning, but thank you so much, Mr. Hooper. Yes, sir. So finance, our finance director is Karen Callan. Such an awesome person, woman and friend. How long have you been with the city, Karen? 16 years! Wow! And actually, she was on the council, when I was on council, you were in the finance department. So Karen is gonna come and talk to us about the money and where our dollars and cents are going with the city. So she helps to make a complicated topic very understandable, and that's because she's so brilliant. So thank you so much, Karen, for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sam Davis, Councilman Davis calls me the money lady. So I will try to make this very understandable because sometimes it can be very complex topics. So the first question that most of y'all are probably concerned about, and most of you recently have received your tax bills in the mail, probably in the past couple weeks. And this right here is our millage rate history, and that millage rate determines how much you are going to pay on your tax bill. Make sure, a lot of people say, hold on, the city's taxes went up. And when I go to look at their tax bill and I research it for them, they're looking at the county's portion. So on your tax bill, you have the county's portion, and you have the city's portion, and you pay in millage rates from the county and the city. So just be sure and keep that in mind that if you have any questions of your mayor and council, you look at the city's portion. This past recent year, the city's millage rate went down. We refinanced our bonds that pay for the police administration building down on 92. The city is in great fiscal condition. It's very similar to when you refinance your house, our payment went down, so we are able to lower our millage rate. So overall, it went from 8.437 to 8.261. So that's good news for your taxes on your tax bill. Now, if your property value went up, then you might see a slight increase, but we know that it's a good thing when our property values go up. This shows the city's history of our property values over the past couple of years. You can see the peak in 2010 was the height of our economy, and then as we went into our recessionary period, that big drop shows all the revenue that the city lost during that time. We could have, the elected officials could have increased the millage rate and not called it a tax increase. Anytime that we raised the millage rate, we have to advertise and have public hearings for citizen input. But because property values went down, they could have raised for a tax increase, but they decided not to. The city, as you can see, in 2017, finally, 2016 and 2017, were pulling out of the recessionary period, and property values are starting to go up. This right here is what we advertise in the paper every year. It's required by state law. It shows what our property values are. It gives you the times of our public hearing so that you can come in and give your input to the elected officials. Each year, we do have a public hearing, and this past public hearing was on August 17th. And we had three or four people show up. So we encourage you to come out and give us your thoughts on how you'd like to see your tax dollars spent. Your total budget this year, $27,396, and this is just for our general fund. We have about 10 or 12 other funds, special revenue funds, but this is our chief operating fund. Our largest portion, our revenue source, are our taxes. But our taxes are broke down into a couple of different types of taxes. 12% of our taxes are from franchise tax. We get franchise tax from Greystone Power, those utilities that lease the right-of-way from the city. 39% are our property taxes, hotel motel tax, the hotels that are within the city are 3%, they pay taxes, and they help fund our general fund budget. Insurance premium tax, and excise and alcohol tax also are, make up that 77% of taxes. Chief Sparks is here. Our fines and forfeitures are 7%. That helps fund our general fund budget. License charges for service, which is our Parks and Recreation. Investment income, as we build our fund balance reserves, our investments go up from interest earnings. And licenses and permits. We had a question earlier about business licenses, and that is a part of our overall revenue source. Where do we spend our money? 37% goes to public safety. That's our largest expenditure within our general fund budget because our elected officials want to be sure that you guys are safe. 3% is our judicial. Our next largest percentage is general government, and that's Finance Department, City Manager's Office, and those types of things. The last slide is our SPOLOST. A SPOLOST referendum was just approved, and thank you all for that. We've heard a lot of feedback about resurfacing transportation. So largest portion of our SPOLOST dollars are going to transportation and resurfacing. 45% will go to transportation. Parks and Recreation, 20%. West Pines Green Investments in West Pines, Clubhouse, Hunter Park, and Jesse Davis Park will receive funding to improve. Public safety is 20% of our SPOLOST. Body cameras, tag readers, and I'm sure when they get to public safety, they can go over these more in detail. Crime scene software. And facilities are 15%, which is our sanitation and maintenance building. This helps, SPOLOST projects are the SPOLOST 1% that the Madam Mayor was talking about earlier, helps us keep our property taxes at a lower rate. It's an additional revenue source. People that come from all over, that come from Alabama to shop here in Douglasville, help fund our services needed for the citizens.
Thank you so much, Karen. In your, you have two, I told you about four handouts that we were giving you tonight, and the annual report for 2017 on page four details all of the finances that Ms. Callan just went over, in addition to the State of the City that was done in February. So you can look at that, you know, at home, at your leisure, or answer any questions that you might have. And of course, you can have an opportunity to answer questions at the end of this presentation. Oh, thank you so much, Ms. Karen, to come on up to the panel. I'd like to recognize Ms. Ruth Morgan, who was one of our appointees to the Planning and Zoning Board. Wave, Ms. Ruth. We're so proud of her. She represents the north side on the zoning board, on the planning and zoning board. So we appreciate your service. Thank you so much. You've been an excellent board member. You know, we'll get in, and they make recommendations to the city council, and some board members are a little shy about putting comments or reasons why, but Ms. Ruth always is very detailed about her reasoning. She studies the issues before she makes a vote, and we appreciate her diligence and her commitment. So thank you so much again. She's an excellent representative on the zoning board. So we'll move on to downtown and special events, and this is some of the fun stuff. Ms. Patrice, how long have you been with the city, Ms. Patrice?
Five years.
Five years? That went by pretty fast. And she is, she's the fun person. You know, if you see her, you know it's gonna be a good time. And on top of that, she bakes. She can really have a business on the side. She does great things for, so if someone wants to invest in a bakery or something, I may help them, get Ms. Patrice out there, give us some cookies and cakes. Okay, please welcome Ms. Patrice Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Patrice Williams. I'm the Downtown Development Authority Director, along with the Community Development Manager. So just wanted to talk about some of the fun things that are going on in downtown Douglasville. We have what we call the Main Street Program, and we do have a Main Street manager. She's not here tonight. She doesn't have to work evenings, I do. So our board, the Downtown Development Authority Board, is the operating board for the Main Street Program. And so we work closely together. If you see April, you probably are gonna see me a couple seconds later, if not before. But our theme, our tagline for the downtown is dine, explore, and vibe. That's pretty self-explanatory, but we do have a lot of great restaurants. We have one that came on board earlier this year, and we actually have a couple more that should be coming along as well. And explore, of course. Come downtown, take a look at a retail that we have, and the restaurants, of course, and some of the fun things like the plaza that we're currently working on. And vibe, kinda means that feeling that you get when you come downtown. Everybody, growing up, where I came from, we like to say, we're going uptown or downtown. And so we kinda want people to get that sense here in Douglasville that downtown is an exciting... And so we kind of want people to get that sense here in Douglasville that downtown is an exciting place to be. This is our vision statement. It's rather long, but essentially what we're saying, "Come downtown." So we're going to go past that. So these are some of the events that we have highlighted, and they're also along with the annual report. But we did the, not so fast. Okay. So we got the car show up there. We're not doing the car show anymore. It didn't catch on. If it doesn't catch on, we don't do it anymore. We have the Christmas tree lighting, which is coming up. So if your church or your civic event, civic group would like to participate, just let me know, and we'll get you an application. And we also have the Ultimate Block Party and yoga on the square. We did yoga on the square. It's one of those initiatives where we wanted people to come downtown, but take part in doing their own events, because April and I can't work all the time. So we wanted independent individuals who were looking to do something fun in our downtown. And so Genevieve started Yoga on the Square, and now she has a business in the downtown. So we're really excited about that. Okay. And just as a list of the events. We have a lot of projects going on. We have Cabin Fever Roasters. They are partner of the Downtown Development Authority. They are actually in our building. They rent from us. We would love for them to purchase that space eventually, but we do have a working relationship with them. Along with, we have the planners that we work with KDB to refurbish every spring and fall. We actually have a date that we're working on October 13th, so if you want to volunteer and help us do the planners, please come out at 9 o'clock. We also have the Revolving Loan Fund, which Divine Cafe and Market, they're taking advantage of. It's basically a 2% interest loan. I'm getting a little long, so we'll just keep going. I shouldn't be longer than Karen Callen. And so we have a big impact in our downtown from the events, from the new businesses that have opened up. And so we really just want everybody to get a great feeling for what we're doing in downtown. We want you to join in. It's your community. You live here. So why not take advantage of the different activities that are going on in the downtown?
Thank you so much, Ms. Patrice. Is this you, Mr. Gregg? Community involvement opportunities. Oh, that's Chelsea. You are beautification. That's you? I don't have you on here, but you need to come and talk because you're very important, maintenance and sanitation and all the things that you do. So, but, okay, Ms. Chelsea. Ms. Chelsea is, she was not our graduate fellow. She works in the office with the City Manager. Ms. Chelsea Jackson, come forward, please. Has it been 18 months? It has been, what you say? So Chelsea's going to talk to us about community involvement, and she's the one who, I will throw a ball in the air and she catches it. So when I said, "Chelsea, we need a jobs fair," I looked around and it was vendors all over the conference center. And then I said, "What else?" There's so many things. I said, "Chelsea, we have to do the volunteer fair or breakfast or something." And she had that planned, and so she is just a whiz. We appreciate her. And come and talk to us, Ms. Chelsea, please, about community involvement opportunities. Ms. Chelsea Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. I promise I will be faster than Patrice and everyone else because mine is very simple and straight to the point. So with the City of Douglasville, we have many boards and commissions and authorities. Throughout the boards and commissions and authorities, we have about 70 volunteers, citizen volunteers, that sit on these boards. We have the zoning board, library board, Keep Douglasville Beautiful, as long as Culture Arts Council, and a lot of others, as you can see. Unfortunately, all of these boards are filled with all of our citizen volunteers, but as always, they do have terms that end. So if anyone would like to participate and volunteer for any of these boards, you can go to douglasvillega.gov, and you can search in the engine, in the search engine, and just put volunteer opportunities, and it'll pull up, and then you just fill it out, and it'll submit your information directly to me. And you get to choose what boards you're interested in, and then I'll follow up with you all with those boards if they have any terms that are expiring or any open positions. As well, we have something new. It will be the Second Citizens Academy called Dos of Douglasville. Basically, Dos of Douglasville, last year it was an eight-week program, but it was such a great hit that we have expanded it. We have a graduate from our first Dos of Douglasville class with us today. So we'll be expanding it to a 10-week program. It'll start in January. It'll go until April 2018. Basically, the Citizens Academy provides citizens with information. It helps you break down their red tape that you usually see in government, helps you understand the budget, helps you understand our police department, and just how, you know, every department in government works. So the application for that will be opening up in October. The application process, it'll be open about a month, and then we'll follow up with everyone who submitted an application from there. If you have any questions about Dos of Douglasville, you can see me afterward, so you can email me at jacksonch@douglasvillega.gov. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chelsea. That was the one she was trying to tell me. That's when I said I wanted a Citizens Academy, so Dos of Douglasville. And the one that she's going, I know she's working on now is the internship. I want interns to come in the city from high school or college and work in city government just to have an opportunity for careers in the future. So she's working with me to have an internship program. Now we have public safety. I don't even know how many years, Chief. Some people, this is a homegrown. We're so proud of him. He used to be 230 pounds of steel, but you're getting skinny now, going to the gym. So our Chief of Police, Gary Sparks, some people call him Goober. You can run up to him, but you can't get too close. He don't, no. Anyway, here's the Chief of Police. He's going to talk to you about public safety. We're so, so very proud of you, Chief, so welcome.
Thank you. I'm proud to be here. Been a long time.
How many years? How many years?
Uh, about 30.
Oh, 30 years. Wow, that's a long time.
It is a long, that's, that's, you're talking about, ugh. But here's our mission statement. Matter of fact, today, we had a, at the police department, we had an information sharing meeting, and we were talking about human trafficking. And that's one way that, one thing that we get involved with to help keep the community safe. Not only our community, but the whole west Georgia area that, today we had a great program. And Councilman Richard Siegel, he was there as well. But if you can see our mission statement, we are here to serve the community. One of our main motto is, "We are one with the community," especially in the time, this day in time, when there's a lot of disconnection between law enforcement and the public. We have, for the last 10 years, embraced building a bridge of overcoming that gap between the police department and our citizens. So we work together. So that's the basic mission statement. Our quarterly stats, you can get those stats on our website. We post those every three months, and then at the end of the year, we'll have all that information out there. We don't want, we want our people to know what's going on. You can see, okay. I just wanted you to look at, you know, especially our use of force. But since we have a lot of things in the news talking about use of force, so far, we had nine, and no soft hands. You know, somebody asked me, "Does that mean like you can grab somebody around the neck? That's soft hands?" No, it's not. That's not what that is. Just like if I actually tell you on the wrist and you pull away, and I just say, "Hey, I have to put my hands on you," something like that. So we, we report everything. Some police departments don't even report that. So this is to let you know how transparent that we are. Our hiring, one thing, I know you'll ask me, where's that, where are we as it relates to minority hiring? I know we're above the national average. I think we're probably about 25% minority hiring, and we have several minorities in the, going to the academy as we speak. We have a lot more of 104, 101 officers. Right now, we have 97 total sworn officers. And so you can look at the calls for service and code enforcement issues as well, and our arrests. Code enforcement is under the police department, and they're doing a great job. And I think they said, they did 1,600 reports during this time, from January to July, and they've given out 177 citations. That main thing, code enforcement, to get people up to code. We ain't out there trying to slam you all and trying to wreck your all tickets. Our main mission is to get you up to code. Now, you can't just stop everything. You can't stop everything from code. We can't stop everything from police perspective, right? So they, those men and women are doing a great job, as are our law enforcement people are. But in law enforcement, it takes the entire community. That's why I say, "We are one." It's not just law enforcement. Everybody that's out sitting in these seats, even in TV land. You're part of the law enforcement team to keep this community safe. Because if you see a crime, you don't say anything. You're part of the problem. CrimeReport.com, you can go on CrimeReport.com, and that's our website. You can see what type of criminal activity is occurring in your area. And then that way, you could better prepare yourself and fight against these crimes. Now, one crime that we've been, we've been having around and throughout Georgia, well, is this entering auto. When you come home, I know you feel safe at home. You go in, you pull up in your driveway, you shut the door, you leave whatever your, the computer or whatever in your car, and you at home, you're supposed to be safe. But here we got some criminal element, just go around and just pull on doors. While you sleep at night, 2:00 in the morning, some person with a criminal addictive thinking mindset is going around pulling doors. So they come pull your door, guess what? You leave your gun in there, you got your computer in there. So you got to take, look at this with yourself. You got to take, just because you're at home, take all your property out. Lock, lock your doors. Now, we have had public safety, public service announcements talking about this specific crime. You know, so, but again, it takes the indulgence of the community to be aware and help us fight the crime. I tell you, you know, you get up and you go get some water or something, at 2:00 in the morning, whatever, you look out. Look out your window sometimes, see what's up. You just might see somebody, you know, ducking behind. Don't go out there and engage. Just get on 911. We'll handle it from there, but we, 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 I'm deputizing all of you. We got to fight it. Decop program, Douglasville Community Outreach Program, that's, this is the legs of, and the boats and the, this is how we build a bridge. We go out to the community, and you know, we have town hall meetings. I'm going to hurry up because I've got a little time. We have town hall meetings, so when we have these town hall meetings, guess what? You don't come. The people don't come. I'm just talking about you all, but usually we have a town hall meeting. We usually have four a year. You have, how many people come? We may get 10. So it made me think we're doing a great job. Now, when, when, when something happens really bad, everybody down there. Okay, so we're trying to warn you. I'm trying to train the citizens, just like we train our officers, to be aware of the problem. So we started a Decop program. Since you don't come to us, we come to you. And we've been going to different communities, knocking on the doors, introducing ourselves to the community so you'll know who your chief are, your deputy chief, your captain, who the officers are. I tell you, we got, you got some great officers. We had, when the rain was coming down so hard, the hurricane, one of the officers, he ran up on this guy who was stuck, and he was dripping wet, and we took him to the shelter. Well, the shelter didn't have any clothes. So this type of man and women, we hire. He went to Walmart with his own money and bought this person some clothes. Now, you ain't going to hear about that in no news. But that's the kind of man and women we employ. That's the mindset and the values I entrust in every man and woman that rock over there at the police department, that we serve, we service at first, number one. So that's some more pictures of Decop program, walking in the streets, serving the community. Handgun clinic, we got those. We're going to get more on, trying to talk about gun safety or gun violence. Now, we have the Youth Against Violence program. We've been doing that for 10 years. We just, we did receive a international Chief of Police. We went to Chicago and got an international Chief of Police recognition for a Civil Rights Award for that program. 10 years we've been doing, engaging our youth community, telling them how to deal with the police, trying to empower them. But you don't hear that on your 6 o'clock news. But this is what we do. Chat with the chief. We got a chat with the chief. It's going to be at St. James, October the 4th. We going, and they can cook up there at St. James. So you all want to come get some breakfast, chat with the chief. We'll be up there. Come on, get some eggs and bacon. You got any problems, we'll talk about them. And we take this all over the city. We done been to the mall, we've been over at our community house. We do the health fair, truck or treat. We doing a whole lot of things, engaging in the community. You know, so we don't want to be a disconnect from the community, like you often see from some police departments. But you know what? All police departments are trying, we're trying to do something. To build the bridge between the community and the police, not just us. All departments are trying to do something. But you know, you may find a person in the police department, somebody make a bad decision, just like somebody at McDonald's. They flip a hamburger, it drop on the floor, he put it in the thing anyway and sell it. Some people just not going to do right, and we trying to weed them out. How I find out, you know, I go to bed at 9 o'clock, and, and, so, but my man is out there 24/7. So if somebody's not doing you right, make a complaint. We even tell these kids how to make a complaint. Because sometime on the street, it's not the time to run amok. On the street, that's the time you be watching, looking. Then come down to the department and make a complaint, and we make, we make sure we take care of it. We commit, we committed to service. That's what we do. You know, that's how, that's what has kept me there for 30 years because my, you know, I didn't come here, here, I'm from here. And, 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 you know, I just serve people, man. That's all I do. And that's what, you know, I was put here to do. So that's what's up with that, and anybody, that's it. Oh, we have Captain Weaver. Over there, he been getting at me for the last three days. I've been calling him someone else. Lieutenant Kelly, and he over code enforcement. And, and, you know, code get a bad name because people just automatically say something about, "The grass is high." Okay, it's been raining for the last three or four days. So we go there and tell them, "Go cut your, cut your grass," before we just start getting them tickets. That's what we do in Douglasville. We ain't trying to hammer nobody. They not over there to try to make money. They over there to get you to conform to the rule. Some people don't see that. And it's just sad to say. And my Deputy Chief, Sue Shaw, she take care of everything and keep me straight. That's, so.
All right, have a seat, Chief. Protection next to you. For these questions and answers that's coming. Thank you so much, Chief Sparks. The last presenter will be Beautification Efforts. I believe that's you, Mr. Gregg, isn't it? He is our Director of Maintenance and Sanitation. Mr. Gregg is the one-liner king. You're the one-liner king, you know? And you, he says some things like old motherwit. If you want to hear something that's really, you have to think about after you walk away, Mr. Gregg is the person to talk to, Greg Roberts. So he's over Maintenance and Sanitation. How many years you been here, Mr. Gregg?
25.
25? What? The silver anniversary, like your beautiful silver hair. Okay, he said the best will last. Mr. Gregg?
Yeah, I don't know how the lineup got like that, but thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Greg Roberts with the Maintenance and Sanitation Department. The most communication that my department would have with you is garbage. And so we pick up a lot of garbage, your recycling, your yard waste. And so hopefully, we serve you folks well. If you have any issues, hopefully you find that we take care of those. You let me know tonight if that's not the case. You can always email me at robertsg@douglasvillega.gov. But our global email address that we prefer to use, you use that one if you need to make a complaint directly to me. But for our services, sanitation@douglasvillega.gov. I think the first slide that here, and we'll, these are some streets that'll be resurfaced. Now, what I will point out to those of you who probably predominantly live here on the north side of the city in this general area that we're in, here in the Brown Street and Culquitt Street area, some of those streets are not on the current list because we know, as Mr. Hooper had mentioned earlier, as the Highway 92 project comes to a close, every street right in this general area along that state route is going to be affected. So we don't want to pave those streets until after that is completed. So streets like Culquitt Street, Malone Street, Brown, what's, what's left of Brown Street. As you know, Brown, a lot of Brown Street goes away. But I think all of us, especially of those of us who've been around here for decades or all our lives, Highway 92 is the road that just seemed like it would never happen. But thanks to Congressman David Scott, he probably doesn't get nearly enough credit for almost single-handedly getting for almost single-handedly getting that to Washington DC and making it happen. A lot of people had the opportunity to do it over 40 years and just didn't do it. So we're grateful to Congressman Scott for doing what others either wouldn't do or couldn't do. And so these are some of the streets. If you had any questions, I could probably answer those for you specifically about the streets that are either on a current list to be done in the next 12 to 18 months, or those that'll be done over the next 36 months. A couple of the transportation improvement projects that we have discussed with the city council. One particular is Douglas Boulevard generally in the area of the mall. Most of us around know that the mall opened around 1998. And so there's not been a lot of improvements by anybody in that general area. And so we're looking to do a beautification project in there. And it's nothing for us to speak on necessarily tonight, but we do know that the mall is looking to do some property upgrades in their area too. So the timing of all this seems to be coming together very well. And so we hope to do a good beautification project in that area that'll be appealing to all of us. The other one is, when you leave here to go to Douglasville by what will in three or four years be the old Dallas Highway, and the city will be naming that at some point in time during that time. But when you get up to where the current railroad crossing is that we all have grown to hate, we'll now be crossing over near the Hollis Street area in front of Mitchell Appliance. You know where I'm talking about? And so we will be working over the next couple of years to try and make that transition from what you and I know now is Dallas Highway over to that new crossing. And so there's a good bit of work, you know, there's that dip that goes down in there. So we have our engineering firm, AECOM, working on that to tie in those two ends and get us there. We have discussed and we're moving forward, we have our engineering firm working on this as well. Can't give you an exact timeline on it, but we're trying to pick up on what some of the other communities in the Atlanta area have done with their interchange ramps at the interstates. And you know, those are some areas you go to in Cobb County or Gwinnett County, and they have those CID areas. But we're looking to do a beautification project on some of our ramps, particularly such as Chapel Hill Road and Highway 5 and State Route 92. For the beautiful, Keep Douglasville Beautiful is a part of the Maintenance and Sanitation Department, and Chan Weeks is the Director of that department. And some of you have probably noticed, we've put a butterfly garden months ago right there at the intersection of East Strickland Street and Dallas Highway, where the, near Willie Watkins Funeral Home. If you stop there and really look, you'll see it. It's really a nice, it has done well. I've been very surprised. I don't know that I had ever heard of a butterfly garden when it was mentioned to me three or four years ago. And I, you know, I wasn't all that optimistic. I'm like, "Well, the butterflies, they won't come." But they will, if you plant the right things. I've been proven incorrect on that, and it's beautiful. You need to stop and take a look at that. And if you have any recommendations on that, let us know. And so with that, for those of you, particularly for yourself or your family member that has served in the military, we're doing the Military Honor Garden at Hunter Park near the airplane out there. I don't know if you've been by there lately. A lot of work going on. We plan to have a ribbon cutting event on Saturday, November the 11th, which is Veterans Day. And so the public is invited to be there. Mark your calendar, be there with us. We'll try to make sure you get a donut and a cup of coffee or something. But we look forward to that. We've made a lot of progress and we're closing in on that. And so I ask you to go by and take a look at it and give us information, feedback on what you think. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gregg. I challenge all the Army folks to meet me with the Military Garden, since I served in the Army, so that we can help our area to look really nice in that Hunter Park Military Honor Garden. The chief went by, really, he said it so fast. I don't know if you really, we're gonna let that marinate for a second, that he received an international award for the chiefs all over the world for Youth Against Violence. Let's please just give him a hand for 10 years. Youth Against Violence. Mr. Travis, get a chair, come on up, please. They may have some parks questions. We're gonna open up for questions and answers. And I will just say again, and just having some closing remarks before we open it up to the public, that it is my honor and my privilege to be your mayor and to serve you. I am a public servant, it's not about titles. I'm just happy to be a servant. I try to do what the Lord has called me to do. And for a time such as this, I believe he's called me to be mayor. And so I'm here to serve his people, which you are. I thank you for your time and attention. You didn't have to take time out of your lives to come this evening and spend time with us. And we really appreciate you doing that. You're taking time out of your families for your homes. And I thank you so much for your attention. I'd like to say also that Positively Douglasville, that the city staff and communications, Ms. Kelly Hunter, has done such a great job. I didn't wanna get on city TV and talk, you know, if you can believe this, I'm kinda shy. I like to stay in the background and just do work. But she had me doing interviews, and it has caught on. I mean, people are calling in to be interviewed. And so if you would go on YouTube and check out Positively Douglasville, I had an interview last week with the district attorney, Brian Fortner, very well. It went so extremely well. He talked about all the initiatives with the district attorney's office. Ms. Dot Page, and I interviewed her. She's written a book, her memoir, it's really about her time when she was at the White House with President Jimmy Carter. She just celebrated her 90th birthday last Sunday. And Mr. President Carter and his wife were at her house, right here in downtown Douglasville. Ms. Rose Gentry, one chopped Chef Junior, I interviewed her. She is a student at Factory Show's Middle School, which is in the city. Let me send your district, Mr. Come on up, Mr. Siegel. They may have a question for you, wanna come up? You're part of council, please come, team member. Okay, and Chief Sparks, as we talked about him, I interviewed him, and it was a great opportunity to hear how he grew up in this community and was nurtured. We interviewed him last year for veterans. He's an Army veteran. Go Army Strong. And we talked to him about that and his experience at, oh, your university. Fort Valley, there you go. Fort Valley, so it was a blessing. And I've had some calls from Representative Kimberly Alexander and Micah Gravely to interview them. And also I have commitments from, we have three Olympians from our community, and they're all African-American females. And so I've had a commitment with Kristy Castlin, we honored her. She won a bronze medal in the last Summer Olympics for track and field, for the hurdles. And Elena Myers, she's, when she comes back home, she's gonna interview with us. She's from Lithia Springs in the county, but her dad does some work with Rotary, which is, we have our meetings in the city. And Sabrina Kekridge, I think her last name is, she's going, what's her last name, honey? Ketter. Well, she was at school with my son. They graduated together at the IB program last year, Douglas County High. And she's going to the Olympics this, and the next Olympics for karate. So that is exciting, that we're doing that, that we support our young people, and they're doing so well. So I will open up, and lastly, I'll tell you if you want to ask me any questions about the Atlanta Regional Commission, because we're part of the metro Atlanta area, the city mayor and the county commission chair, that we're part of the Atlanta Regional Commission. So I serve on that board, and my committees are transportation, air quality. We're working on bikes and pedestrian trails within the city and the county. Madam Chair and I, Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones, we have an excellent relationship. So we serve on the transportation committee together. And I'm on community resources and water. I've been on the Water and Sewer Authority for over a decade. Mr. John Citizen is a board member as well with the Water and Sewer Authority for Douglasville, Douglas County. So I serve on the board for the county and at the Atlanta Regional Commission that helps us with our water. You know, we're in water wars. We fight with Alabama and Florida all about water. And it's a resource that God gives us, so we can't get back, so we have to be great stewards over that. So now, it's beyond a little bit half point. We're gonna be here as long as you need us to, and we're gonna open the floor, open the floor for questions, and I will bring the mic to you, and you can ask anything. We'll be, oh, you have a mic, Ms. Kelly? Okay. Husband, would you be a honeydew, please? And run around with the microphone. Thank you. 20, that's my baby daddy, I shouldn't say that, but that's my baby dad. And 21 years, it'll be 22 in November, that he has been such a blessing. He really is my covering. And we all know that, you know, sometimes I can't, I don't like McDonald's, and so I'll set food out, and he cooks, and he does everything. So I just appreciate you, husband, for doing the things you do. All right. Questions, anyone? Yes, ma'am? Anyone on the panel, you can ask a question, or myself.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Evans, and I'm a resident of Douglas Village. And I appreciate all the information that you all gave us today about the things that's happening in the city. However, I was here for the last town hall meeting, and I recognize that no information was given about what's going on with Douglas Village Apartments. So I'd like to know an update about that, if you don't mind.
Well, I don't have a whole lot of information because that is a county initiative. So I know Commissioner Mitchell was here, and he talked about, I believe it's gonna be retrofitted through the, not the Community Services Board, but does anyone know? So I really can't speak to that because it's a county initiative, and I don't have any information. But I can, I will talk to Commissioner Mitchell. And if you leave your name and your information, I'll call you. I'll speak with him tomorrow morning, and I promise you, I'll get back with you and give you the information that you need, just an update on it. And in fact, when I do that, I can put it on our website so that anyone else, because you're in the city limits, but it is county. So someone can, I'll get the information to you. I apologize that I don't have that tonight, but thank you for coming, anyway. Any more questions? We don't have any questions for real. Thank you. Please give us your name.
Hello, I'm Tamika Day, and I'm a business owner in Douglas County. And also, I wanted to know about, I'm here with Mitchell Construction Group and EHD Construction, and we wanna know about partnering with Women on Businesses and construction companies to maybe be able to get some of the minority contracts that are coming through the city of Douglasville. So can you speak on that?
Yes, ma'am. We do have a procedure, we do a request for proposal. Patrice, are you the person to answer that question? Or Chelsea? She can talk to you about it. So we do, we will send out a request for proposal, and of course, and that comes out in the paper and on our website, and you can apply. And if you meet those requirements, of course, we'll bring you in. And the council, our vetting process is that staff vets it to three businesses, and then those three come before the council, and we vote on the three that were presented at that time. But Ms. Chelsea, you can give more details.
I can talk a lot enough. So if you go to our website, we have a vendor registry. Oh, thank you. If you go to our website, we have a vendor registry. And register as a vendor. Underneath that vendor registry, it asks if you're a construction company, or asks you're an architect, so it asks what category you fall in. So therefore, when we go out and do requests for proposals, we pull those vendors in first and send those bids out to those individuals. And that company also get a notification that we have, you know, a bid available on our website. But always go to our website, Douglasvillega.gov, and go to the open bids tab. Sometimes you have to click on like the open bids tab, and it'll open everything up, all the open bids that we have. Everything is posted on our website, as well as the Douglas County Sentinel.
Thank you, Ms. Chelsea. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I live on Hollis Street, and I know two of the gentlemen's talked about the 92, the beautification, everything, the rerouting 92, to use the Strickland, excuse me, as the Strickland Street. On Hollis Street, we have a problem with speeding. No, there's no speed sign. There, you know, all the traffic, if the train is on the tracks, they either use Hollis Street or Chicago Avenue. It's a safety issue.
Yes, ma'am. So you're requesting a?
We need a, we need a speed sign, speed bumper, something to slow people down.
Okay, now, the humps, I know the chief can speak to this. That has to be signature process with the majority of signatures from your neighbors to put a hump, because some people may not want the speed hump or bump in front of their home. So you would have to solicit signatures, and like, it's a survey or something, and get all those signatures. But you can, could you put up a, you can put up a sign, chief?
We could put some signs up, but that street is a cut through. We'll put the signs up, and then hopefully we can stop some people and maybe issue some citation. But sometimes you put up signs, and they, they may adhere to them or may not. But we, we gonna get something done. You spoke to me about that just a minute ago. We already got something in the process. So we don't know unless you all call. Don't wait until you have a town hall meeting. If you have a problem, call the police department, and we'll get on it. And Greg Roberts will do the same. So don't wait until we have a meeting and you have an issue. Call us.
Thanks, chief. But we gonna get the signs up. And if you want to petition for a hump, then, I don't know the percentage. What's the, do you know the percentage, Mr. Gregg? I think it's 75% or something like that, that you, yeah, but I believe it's 75% for your neighborhood, or which, or street to have a hump on your, you know, put in your street. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Fay Carter. And just listening to the park plans that you have, I see the parks that are named, and the Willing Workers Community Park, I take to heart. I've been to a couple of town hall meetings. It is a part of the north side, new rising. I wanna see something that's going to happen, and I may need to talk to someone else further about why is it never mentioned? That park is never mentioned. And another thing, I would like to talk to maybe somebody with the historical sites. That particular park originally, and is, and was, and still is, the first black park that ever was to exist. So I like to see that done too. It's a lot of work, but I just need them to know that I really take it to heart for a reason.
You're welcome. Well, I'm glad you brought it up, because then it gives us an opportunity to tell you, so we can brag about what's going on with Willing Workers. Mr. Our Parks Director, Travis Landrum, we have a 10-year master plan for the parks, for Douglasville Parks and Recreation Department. And that's inclusive of all of the parks. So it's Jesse Davis Park, Hunter Park, Fowler Field, Willing Workers, and the Mill Village. So those are our five parks. And when you see one park, you gonna, you gonna know it's the city of Douglasville. We shouldn't have our flagship park, which is Hunter, shouldn't look different from the rest of the parks. So in your family, it's four kids in our family. We have our different look, but we all look like Martins. So all the parks need to look the same, and they are going to look the same. So we have a 10-year master plan, and it will address Willing Workers Park. I'm glad that you talked to me about it. I know Ms. Sarah Whitaker is part of the group too, and you all, we had some renovations not very long, maybe three or four years ago, but if you, two years. So if you can write up something for me, we will present it to the historic district, and we'll try to get on the historic register. We'll get that plaque and put it at the park in a prominent place after it's done. But Mr. Landrum, can you please talk to us about our 10-year master plan and what we're doing for all of the parks, and specifically, in particular, Willing Workers?
Thank you. Just to follow up on the statement she provided, the, recently, we had some concepts come out that was presented to mayor and council, and it was also put out in the newspaper. Those concepts, again, focused on those three parks, Willing Workers, Mill Village, and here Jesse Davis. Those will be rolled into the 10-year master plan, as she mentioned. And we will have town hall meetings very similar to this to get the input from the public. So then, when we go to redesign those parks and develop those parks, it has the driven purpose from the community as to what will be installed into those parks. Now, as far as the historical aspect of it, that I personally can't speak to, but as she, she addressed it, that can be taken care of in that manner also. But there definitely is a plan in place for those parks. And that master plan, 10-year master plan, we actually just had that award bidded here this past Monday. So that firm will come in, and they will start developing the foundation, not only for those parks, but the city as a whole. So on one of the slides earlier, it mentioned that the Splotz dollars would be used for some of the parks, and it mentioned Jesse Davis, but it includes Willing Workers and our other parks in our inventory as well.
Thank you. Mr. Landrum's working on getting me some, what's the thing with the light? Yes, sir, security light. So we're gonna have those in our parks as well. So I went to Smyrna with Congressman Scott for his military awards ceremony, and there were, it was a telephone. I know that's old school to have a phone somewhere, right? But it's, it had a phone, and it was a light, and it was, but it really went to security. So if something is happening to you, and you're in one of our parks, we're gonna institute those lit areas that you can go to for security and push a button, and someone will come to you. And it's just a lighted place so that every so often, there's a light somewhere. And if you're in the parks, you'll have a security measure. So thank you so much for that. Any other questions? Oh, good evening.
My name is Cheryl Benefield and I'm also a resident at Douglas Village Apartments. And this is a public safety issue. Is there possible that during the night, maybe around midnight, 2 o'clock, that we can have more police patrol? Because on Friday night, there was a gun, four gunshots back to back and I called, but I didn't see anyone. I, I waited at my window. So I just want to know if that is possible, that that can happen so we can be safe? Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Did you tell them that you wanted to talk to, speak to an officer?
Well, honestly, no, I didn't.
Because that's, they won't do that. Some people want to be anonymous.
That's what I did.
So if you call, because if I hear, if I hear a dog barking, when I know the dog, the muffle thing is supposed to be on, I will call the police officer. When you call 911, it's the county, but they'll send police officers and they'll ask, do you want to speak to an officer? So if you don't say that you want to speak to one, if they forget to ask you that, say, I want to speak to an officer, so that you know someone has come by. But if you don't say that you want to talk to someone, the police officer will come through and take care of the situation and keep on moving.
Okay.
But if you say that you want to speak to someone, they will stop by and talk to you and just give you an update on what, you know, your call was about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome. Chief, you want to talk about the zones? I know you have the zones and maybe at midnight?
You did a good job. We have an officer over here in this area, that's Captain Weaver over there and I see he took some notes of that. But you know, when you call, call 911, the mayor correctly stated, if you don't say you want to meet with the officer, the officer is gonna respond. You know, when you make a call, every one of our responding calls is logged, timed, and, and we, officers usually do, do some type of report or it's reported on our CAD system that officers responded. You know, Brown Street Apartments, Douglasville Village, I would say, I would, I would, hopefully that you all would come together and organize yourselves as a, as a community in there, which you are a small community. Organize yourselves so these type of things and other type activities going on in that area can, can be taken care of by you all, by getting the information to us. We'll come in there, we're gonna come and do a de-cop program in there very soon, maybe the next couple of weeks. You make sure we get that down. So the next couple of weeks, we'll come through that. But again, it comes back to what the community may allow. So we, we calling, asking you all to be involved with what's going on in that community. Now, there's cameras in that Brown Street and we go down there and we review those cameras even for this shooting incident. We'll go down and see if we possibly get some footage and then we'll, we'll try to arrest these people, try to find out. But again, the more organized the community is, because again, like the mayor said, you got one guy, one officer riding through here and you know, if he, if he or she comes through and it's quiet, they may get another call and they go somewhere else. But you know, organize yourselves. You know, that's the best. We have a neighborhood watch program. You can call our training division and we can get, we can help get you all organized and trained through our neighborhood watch program. Is that all right?
That sounds great.
All right.
Make sure you leave your name and number and I will check up on you and see what's, what's the goings on and make sure that, that happens. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
My name is Kelvin Burton and my wife is a business owner here in, in Douglasville. I am also. Okay, okay, okay.
Say, she, don't, she introduced me, she said. Introduce me.
But my question is, you know, for small businesses independently owned here in Douglasville, can you speak towards any incentives that the city may or may not have or is there any consideration for incentives for small businesses to maintain and to stay in the city and to, to thrive here?
That's a great, great question, a great recommendation. We want you to stay. Thank you for coming to the city of Douglasville. Of course, our arm is through Ms. Patrice Williams and she can address that. We do have facade grants to help you with your buildings. We partner with the Chamber of Commerce, but she can speak directly to that. And if we need to institute something to kind of support and help each other, we'll do that as well. So you're gonna be on the committee if I have to? Okay, now, there you go.
To kind of reiterate what the mayor just said, we, it's, it's based on where you're located. So for us, we have an opportunity zone. The entire downtown is a part of that opportunity zone, all the way down to Hospital Drive. So it sounds like you are in that area.
Yeah, I'm Fable Road.
Fable Road? Okay. But Fable Road, Fable Road is also?
Right across the street.
It's, that's a part of the opportunity zone as well, the area. And so it's, you get a TICE credit, $3,500 per employee. You have to have more than two employees and they can't be husband and wife. But we do have that. That, that's perfect. That's perfect. In addition to that, we of course, we're a Main Street community, so if you're located in the heart of our downtown, we are eligible to work with you to get a downtown low interest loan at a 2% interest rate. So that's something that we could help you with as well. And as the mayor spoke to, we do have the facade grant. We give two awards every year. So there's not a lot of money out there, but there are resources that are available to you and we can connect you to USDA and so, and other organizations that might be able to assist as well.
Thank you. Ms. Patrice, we need a business expo. Okay? Ms. Chelsea, you know I always throw this, I'm throwing a ball in the air. Okay, you got me. A business expo for small businesses in particular and all of the businesses within the city of Douglasville. Is that the judge?
Madam Mayor, Barbara Caldwell is my name. I have a concern, not so much as a question, but I do know that it's probably included into the 10-year plan for the Parks and Recreation Centers. But over here at night, when it's football going on, I mean, you can't get up through there. And I happen to be over here and I come quite often with all of the activities that go on at Hawthorne Center here. There was an emergency and it was very hard and difficult for the caretakers to come through to get here to attend to the problem that we had. So we do have a parking problem. They're all, they're parking in the street, if they got a long truck, it's hanging out and it's very, very difficult to get through. And I am concerned about the safety of our children and adults when there may be a problem. You know, a, a child needs to be attended to, that football and so forth. So can you address that?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Well, you're the judge. We always say, here comes the judge. But Mrs. Caldwell, we do have, thank you so much for bringing that up. Travis is already standing up. That's what I'm talking about. I have the concept plan for Jesse Davis Park and it does include a parking plan. But of course, we don't want to put a whole lot of money into something that's permanent until the bypass is completed. So I have the plan here and we can look over it and you can see more particularly how it addresses a parking issue, but Travis?
Correct. The long-term answer is the parking, the parking and the assessment. Even in the concept, that was one of the things that we had, the firms to go ahead and look at, they come up with ideas to address that issue. But in the short term, that's something that we can address with our park security. We can have those guys come up with a different plan of handling this issue out here. So that's something we can do immediately on that turnaround to address that because of course, if we do have an emergency and they can't get to it, then that creates a bigger problem. So we want to make sure those can get serviced when they need it. So that's something we can work on, obviously even starting as early as this week with games being scheduled. So we'll take a look at that ASAP.
Thank you so much, Mr. Landrum. And those Tiger Cubs, we have to support them. That's award-winning football. They like got the Super Bowl of football, Tiger Cubs. Any other questions or comments or concerns? Mr. Citizen?
I don't have a question for anybody on the firearm. We don't have a gun lock. We have free gun locks for anybody who wants to give it to somebody who own a weapon or need a gun lock. P C Chief, I have a badge, P C Chief in my car. So anybody want a free gun lock to give to somebody, we have children that they own a firearm, we have them free. So P C Chief, he'll give it to you after your program.
Mr. Citizen, hand him the microphone. Does he have, do you not have one? Can you just tell us a little bit about what you do at Stewart Middle School?
Oh, well...
You do a lot at the school, but we want you just to talk, because you're a great advocate to the community.
Stewart is a personal highlight of mine. But by the way, since you brought it up, we are trying to get a ice machine for Stewart Middle School. I'll put up at least $1,500 if somebody want to match me with the dollars, because the football program or the athletic program need an ice machine because when kids out there practicing, when I'm overheat, they don't have a, a ice machine to put a child in that cold ice to cool them down. So the school asked me to help get them an ice machine.
Okay.
So that's one of my biggest project this week. I'm trying to find one, but they all about $3,500. I'm limited. I can put up $1,500 of my own money. But if you want to help with that, please see Ms. Scott at Stewart Middle School. She'll be happy to take your donation. But every Friday morning, we have the privilege of bringing the gospel to that school. If you have a church who wants to be involved in that school or want to be a part of that, please see Ms. Scott again and we'll be happy to partner with you and to help make that possible. The PTA needs a lot of help. This is for the North Side students. So please, any help you can give to help that school be a better school is for our kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Citizen. So in closing, I'll just highlight, oh, we have another question? Did you raise your hand, Mr. Steve? Okay. In closing, closing remarks, I'll ask any of the panelists, do you want to say anything while we close? Money, money's not talking right now, community. Mr. Segal, Councilman, chief? Okay.
That's what I say, you know, we, law enforcement, we here to serve and that's what we are, servants. And there's no disconnect between the citizen and the police department. We encourage you all, the citizens, to be, that's hearing the ones out there and watching, are gonna be watching this program, to be the eyes and the ears for the police department so we can respond and properly get information so we can properly investigate crimes that occur in the city of Douglasville. So we all have a stake in keeping our community safe and not just a police thing, it's, it's our thing. And then if you don't want to get involved with it, then like I said earlier, you're part of the problem. So we just encouraging our, our whole community to be involved with safety, be involved with keeping our community safe. As we grow, it just happens to happen that crime grows with us. So you have to keep your eyes open. We ride around in a black and white. Criminal activity is afoot, they see the car coming, they stop. You there 24/7, you see what's happening, you see who doing what. That's how we were able to get some, some gang activity out of one of our communities because the community rose up and said, I'm tired of this, I can't go to sleep, my kids can't even ride a bicycle in the yard. So I'm calling on you all to be a part of your police department, which you are. We trying to make, keep our police department legitimized and where it gets legitimized is from you. So be a part. Come see what we doing. Come and see what our philosophy is. Come down and take a look at what you doing. Even if you leave Douglasville, you go to some other community, go and visit the police department. See how the men and women are being trained. And then when, if something bad happened, you know, you don't have to get out there and start whatever and because you know what your department is pushing and training their men and women.
All right. The chief is passionate and that's a good thing. So we'll just do a couple of highlights. We've talked about all of these areas tonight, transportation, finance, community services, community involvement, and beautification. So on the North Side, we have the Butterfly Garden at Worthen Park with splosh transportation, Dallas Highway, West Strickland Street, Macarley Street. Those are transportation improvement, improvements, of course, the $111 million state highway 92 project, just for everyone's benefit, the beautification projects for the splosh that are on the ramps. So when you get off of the highway at I-20 and Highway 5, I-20 Chapel Hill Road, I-20 Fable Road and I-20 Thornton Road, it's going to look much better. It's $500,000 allocated to help those gateways. For splosh resurfacing, the list of, is exhaustive. Mr. Greg put the list up, but I'll just highlight some of the North Side streets, Malone Road, Mountain Trail, Nolan Place, Odessa Place, Pound Circle, Ridge Avenue, Stone Bridge, Stone Creek Court, Stone Ledge, Warren Drive, Willow Creek Court, Wood Court and Wood Spring Court, Chicago Avenue, Cobblestone and Hillview Lane, which is in Hunter's Ridge subdivision. So those are some of the streets and not all the streets in this area where the highway 92 is going to be resurfaced are going to be done, the entire area. The, the chief of course has a community outreach program, which is really a police precinct on Hollis Street. So that is in the North Side area as well. And so those are some of the things that are germane to the North Side in addition to Jesse Davis Park and Willing Workers Park that's included in the 10-year master plan. And please don't leave all this paper. I had Ms. Kelly print up for me in such a quick fashion. I said, as I said at the beginning of our meeting tonight, our town hall, that there is a flyer that gives you all the important numbers in the city and the county and it has animal control, alcohol license, district attorney's office, everything, tag office, city and county information. And on the back of that is the city map and it gives you the wards and your representatives. And the representatives here are Dr. LaShawn Burdenly, who was here earlier this evening but had to leave, and Samuel Davis, Councilman Davis, whose father is named for Jesse Davis Park. He sends his regrets, he had a previous commitment. And pick up that piece of paper, the 2017 State of the City that was done in February and the annual report. So I have an exhaustive list of resurfaced streets, the Jesse Davis master plan that includes the parking, another plan that talks about all the resurfacing and I left my highway 92, it's a big pack of highway 92 that tells all about what's gonna go on in highway 92 and how we're gonna try to work on bridges and all the safety issues. But if you'd like to talk to me after I'm available and I'm here until you're ready to leave. So thank you again for your time. God bless you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm so sorry, but I do want to mention that this is not the North Side, this is New Horizons community.
New Horizons community.
We're trying, we don't refer to the South Side, we don't refer to the East Side, we don't refer to the West Side.
Yes, ma'am.
We refer to the North Side. We shouldn't do that with the whole community.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what you all have said. We want to be inclusive with everybody in Douglasville and Douglas County.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is the New Horizons community.
The New Horizons community. Forgive me if I said North Side. I'm used to saying that for 21 years. North Side. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So, oh, yes.
With the judge saying that it's New Horizon, can we get a banner to put it up on 92 to let everybody know that we have a new name now?
You want to wait till the highway done, you want to do it now?
Oh, we need to do it now.
We'll do it now. Who's, who's the banner? Mr. Greg? You hear about some banner? Did you hear about the banner? Okay. He said he got to talk to me about it. Okay, we're gonna talk about it and we'll see how that works. Mr. Greg is, I take pictures. You see this sign right here? It needs to be replaced, you see? So he, I have a great staff. Thank you so much, staff, for coming out on your evening, away from your families and out of your time. I really appreciate it. Stellar staff. Thank you, Councilman Segal. He is everywhere. It doesn't matter what ward it is, he's gonna be there. So thank you so much for your commitment to serve the community. Thank you, chief, and thank you for city TV. And again, this is our community. I'm your mayor, I'm here to serve you. I'm a public servant and it's an honor and a privilege to be your mayor. And this is inclusive, this community, this city is everyone. It doesn't matter what side of town you live on, how much your house cost or didn't cost or, we're all one. We're gonna rise and fall together and we are going to rise. My vision is one of planning, write it, plan, write it down, make it plain so people can see it and run. So we have plans that we're gonna do while I'm here, as long as God will have me and the people see fit, we're gonna be moving and doing something that's great. God bless you. Thank you again for your time tonight. Thank you. God bless you. (applause)